Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council. This is a regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, and 7:30 PM. This meeting is through virtual contact through Zoom. Call this meeting to order. You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. A listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by City Council. The mayor will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have a specific item removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion. Either the public or council member may request that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda at that time prior to council vote. First item is approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes for November 24th, 2020, and approval of the expenditure vouchers of December 8th, 2020. Okay, council? Do I hear a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Mike, were you going to add that other agenda item?
Yes. Another item that was added to the agenda, okay, is the other items of business. Item 8A, it's going to be a memo of understanding between the Cortez Network and Monzuma County, the RABAN Network. Okay, do I hear a motion on the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda that's presented with the addition.
Okay.
Second.
Don Bree?
Aye.
Hawkins?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Jossie? Baby?
Aye. Thank you. Next item is under Presentation. We're fortunate to have some wonderful city employees here today, and we're going to give awards for their years of service. We will distribute to the community of employees here. The first person is Neva Connolly. She's been here for five years. And for the members that aren't here in person, we will mail these cards to them with a bonus check. Okay, next person.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's Rosa Diamond with five years' service. Thank you so much, Rosa.
Thank you.
Okay. Next person is Noah Herman with five years' service. Brent German, five service, five years' service. Rich Landreth, five years' service. Taylor Marcell, also five years. Reg Maynard, five years. David Potter, been here for five years. Priscilla McGay, also five years. Okay. Sarah Coffey, been here for 15 years. Okay, we're backing up a little bit. See, Daniel Hernandez, 10 years' service. David Rucker, 10 years' service. Okay, Tony Hernandez, 15 years' service. Tony, thank you. Dave Shack. Congratulations, David. We appreciate you very much. Thank you.
You too can be here as long as you want.
Okay, Buck Woodman, 15 years. Judd Yeach, 15 years. Correct, Yinch, Yeach, okay. Ivan Light, 15 years. Thank you for your service, Brian. Thank you. Okay, 20 years' service, Nathan Hoffman. Thank you, David. Andy Brock, 25 years. Matt Cashner, 25 years. Congratulations, Matt. Okay. Okay, Don Royce, 25 years. Hey, Don. 30 years is Nick Randall. Thank you, Nick. 35 years, Lori Milich. Thank you, Lori. And, see, we're, I mean, we're just about toward the end here. No, wait a minute. Oh, here we go. Here we go. Forty, forty years of service with the city of Cortez, Russ Machen. That was fun. Yeah. Okie dokie.
I just want to, sorry, Mike, I just wanted to say thanks for all the employees, for all the years they served. But I guess Russ started when I was born.
Okay. The next item. That was fun. Next item is the Financial Information Presentation made by Lorraine Trotter and Tim Mayberry on the 2016 financial audit.
Yeah, and good evening, council. I'll kick it off if you don't mind. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, yeah. It's good news, we have our 2016 financial audit that is complete. It'll be officially approved by council when you all meet an agenda officially in January. But four years in the making, a lot of work from our teams. My team, you know, especially thanks to Lorraine, excuse me, to Lynette and Sarah for helping with that. And Sarah, congrats again for 15 years tonight. And then also I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to Lorraine Trotter for helping us get across the line, and also for Tim Mayberry and the audit firm for getting a lot of work done. It was complicated and challenging. So how this will go is I will, next Tim will come up, and he will present the financial information and provide some color and context and whatever else he would like to share with you. Followed by Tim will be Lorraine Trotter. And just remember, reminder, Lorraine Trotter is the consultant the city of Cortez hired to help us complete our books and get them in order in the second set of eyes. And she will follow to give a little more context and to help you all get a better understanding of the financials and interpretation, what it may mean to you. So with that, I'll turn over to Tim. And Tim, thank you. And I'll preface this, Tim, or Lorraine, if you need any presentation, if you need to present, you can, it should be fairly straightforward. However, if you can't and you need me to, I can do it for you as well.
Thanks, Ben. I'm Tim Mayberry, and I've been, we've been working on this audit for a very long time. As Ben mentioned, we're very happy that we finally have this put together. I'm not going to go through a lot of the detail in depth. I think your management team will probably go through that more, in more detail, after I do my highlights. Overall, as we've discussed in the past, 2016 was a very challenging year. Between the fact that you had an investment going on, you also had a software conversion that also occurred that same year. From an audit perspective and just unraveling things, realizing that the embezzlement is the more serious of the issues, but the more complicated and the more things that we had to fight were related to the conversion. Essentially, anything that could go wrong with that conversion did go wrong. And what I'm going to do is, as I'm going through this, Ben and Lorraine, if you want to chime in with where anything is at more currently than what this is, because obviously this is a 2016 presentation, I'm going to hit the highlights of where we're at for 2016. Again, a lot of unraveling to get to numbers that we are comfortable with as far as where you're at. There are a few, again, a few highlights that I want to point out. Not going to go through it in detail. But, and I'm not necessarily going to flip through the pages all more point stuff out. And then again, as your staff goes through it, I'm sure you'll be able to go, or you'll actually be flipping through individual pages. Couple of the highlights is general fund. We're really not concerned with any of your carryovers and any of your funds outside of three of those. And I will highlight those for you as we go through. General Fund overall has about three months of operating reserve. You had $3 million at the end of the year. Again, Ben has much more current numbers. They have not been audited, but he has much more current numbers than that at this point. And I'm sure you're working through your budget process or are almost at the point of completing your budget process. The biggest thing with General Fund and 2016, and again, this is going back a ways. During 2015, late 2015, you purchased this new City Hall that you're in at this point in time. During 2016, you completed the construction of City Hall or the remodeling of City Hall to make it ready for your use. In order to complete that process, General Fund did have to borrow $1 million from the Recreation Fund. That number is actually still sitting on your books or was sitting on your books at the end of 2016. I'm not sure if you've made any progress on making payments on that at this point, but that balance is, or in this presentation, is still owed between Recreation and General Fund. You do have a new, and I think, Ben, you ran across this. Evidently, prior to our starting as your auditors, the city had passed a Tabor election question that basically debruised the city. And so in your prior audits and to our understanding, that debruising election basically said, okay, whatever you collect and re, whatever you collect, you can retain and use for whatever purposes. Evidently, the actual election question said, yes, you can retain anything, but it must be used for capital. So part of the ongoing computations or things we had to do to get this 2016 put together was to go back and recompute what your Tabor excesses would have been had your, again, prior audits and if we would have known what excesses you had and whether or not those had been used towards capital projects. And in this case, there was a prior number that needed to be used. You had existing capital that used that up. You had a significant Tabor excess for 2016. That was primarily related to the fact that you received a state grant for the remodel of City Hall. By completing the City Hall project that year as well, that used up that Tabor excess. So you have a new capital improvement fund, which is your Tabor excess. In the case of 2016, we put $1,939,000 in there, and you spent $1,939 on the cap, on the City Hall project. Essentially, for presentation purposes, we moved money out of General Fund and moved expenses out of General Fund, so there really wasn't any effect on your bottom line. We just needed to show that extra fund in order to show compliance with your Tabor election question. Again, no real concerns with your other street improvement had $2.7 million carry forward. Equipment had $1 million carry forward. One of the other governmental funds that we did have or that does have a deficit is Rogers Tax Fund. It was not a huge deficit at the time. It was about $27,000 in the hole. That's one of those that was probably just a one-time thing. I'm assuming that at this point, Ben, that that fund is back whole and there's no issues with that one. So that one is, from our perspective, is not a big concern. You have 366 Funds and Internal Service. I'm trying to flip to those just so I can refer to them. Same thing, no real concerns. Airport did spend down a little bit, but they've got $7.8 million worth of carry forward in there of that. Not a huge amount, because again, your airport operation, and Russ does a great job with that, is limited to the amount of traffic that you have coming in and your fuel sales and things like that. You actually have, of the 7.8 million, most of that is obviously the airport itself. There was $161,000 excess that was unrestricted for any use. Recreation Fund had $7.3 million carry forward. Of that, $2.7 million was for any use. Again, a large portion of that, or a portion of that was, had been loaned out to the General Fund, and will still need to come back in. Water Fund had $11 million carry forward, 2.2, free and clear for any use. Hydro Plant has always been a little tricky as far as they have, and they have excess or they have equity, but typically it's more tied up in your operations or in your plant. So even though you had $72,000 worth of equity, that actually had a deficit of $37,000 unrestricted. One of our problem children is the City Community Network Fund. And I know that, Ben, you've been addressing this or working on trying to make some changes to that. What we ran across and, or what we finally ended up doing with 2016 is, prior to 2016, you had hired a consultant to complete some federal reimbursement forms. Essentially, the telecommunications tax that you pay as part of your telephone bill. The city was trying to request reimbursements for some of its costs related to that or from that fund. And you were submitting reimbursement requests, and you were booking those annually with regards to, hey, we're going to get reimbursement from the feds or from the E-rate funding to offset some of our costs. And that number just kept building up and building up and building up, and we kept questioning it. And finally, when Ben came on, we sat down with him and said, okay, hey, you've booked a significant receivable here. That receivable just does not appear to be coming in. We would recommend that you go ahead and book an allowance against that. And then if it ever does come in, great, you've got some cash that helps offset operations. But if it doesn't come in or not, distorting your financial statements and showing something that isn't actually there. That hit for last year, or for last year, for 2016, was $410,000. There's $410,000 worth of receivables on the books that, again, it just kept building up. We had concerns about whether or not it was ever to come in. And obviously, from 2016 on and coming back out in 2017 and coming back out in 2018 and coming back out in 2019, it still had not come in. It's like, there's no reason, there's no justification for recording this. I don't know, Ben, if you've had a chance or if there is a way to recoup those or if you were just told that, hey, that money is just not going to be, it's not claimable by the city. But for, at least for 2016, we took that off your books. Accordingly, City Community Network, which originally started with $489,000 of carryover, we obviously wrote that down. It's been losing money over time. You actually ended up with a $70,000 deficit. Now, $70,000 deficit is one thing, but the flip side is you have $486,000 worth of capital assets there that you can't spend. So on a, what is our deficit carryover? You actually had a $557,000 deficit carryover in City Community as far as your cash flow or available resources as opposed to the actual plant that you obviously can't sell. Again, I know you've been trying to make changes in that operation. I'm not sure where you're at with that. And maybe that's something that your staff can follow up or add some to it. But for right now, that's one of our two main concerns is City Community Network. Solid Waste Collection had $1.1 million carry forward, $960,000 free and clear to be used for anything. And then Dispatch also had a little bit of a carry forward. Our other concern is in your Internal Service Funds. And in your case, you have three Internal Service Funds. Two of them, absolutely no issues with. Shop Fund had $336,000 carry forward. Technology had a $300,000 carry forward. A little bit of Technologies was capital assets, but primarily it's unrestricted carryover. The problem, or the one that we've had an issue with, and I don't know if any of you were actually on the board or on council when I actually presented the 2015 audit report. Ben, that's been a few years ago. We had issues with it at that point in time, and we were just, we were getting a little bit of a pushback as far as whether or not it was actually an issue or not. But your self-insured health fund is a fund that you guys set up to essentially pool resources from all of your funds that pay employees or that have employees. And essentially, each one of those funds would pay an insurance premium to the self-insurance fund. And then you would pay for your self-insurance premiums and health claims out of the self-insured fund. There's always been some question as far as, do we fund that on a cash basis or should it be funded based on projected liabilities? From a GAAP perspective, you're supposed to be funding that on a, or we have to recognize the accrual liabilities, not just what you're paying out in cash. That fund has always been a little tight or has been, has consistently been tight. 2016 was no exception. We started the year, self-insurance fund started the year with a $646,000 deficit. And again, that had been accumulated over time because the premiums that the funds were paying on behalf of the employees and for coverage was not enough to cover the actual costs that the city was having to outlay. For 2016, it didn't get any better. You went from a $646,000 deficit to a $1,069 deficit. So you added another $400,000 to it. We've discussed that with staff, and I don't know. John, I think we initially talked about that in 2019, I think. Maybe, maybe the year before, I'm not sure, as far as when all of this. But we've known that that's been an issue. Part of the issue for 2016, though, was the accounting internally with the software conversion. And again, like I said, anything that could go wrong did go wrong with the conversion. The accounting for that activity was not correct to begin with. So even going through everything, we had to unravel what you were actually charging yourself, what should be remitted. And essentially, what initially was the issue was what you were charging yourself was not being, what not, what was being remitted to the fund. And part of that is because you were continuing to do how you had worked with the old software as opposed to the new software. But ultimately, the biggest thing with 2016 is the numbers that initially were presented were absolutely not correct. It has taken, obviously, years to get to a point of having most of these things addressed. There are obviously still some unraveling that we just couldn't get to, and we had to say, okay, close enough, this is as good as we're going to get. But with, Ben and I were working on it, Lorraine came in and helped us out as well, just trying to say, okay, we know something's wrong with self-insurance. And we had been pointing that out all the way through, even with prior administrations. They finally worked through it with our, we've said, okay, look at this, look at that. And then you got, your staff came back and said, okay, how about changing this? Or not, how about changing? We think this needs to be adjusted. We need, we think this needs to be corrected. But even with that, you still had a significant loss in your self-insurance fund. As we've talked internally with your management team, really, the only way you're going to be able to fix that, and again, you, you're kind of in a hole and trying to unravel it, is by charging yourself more to make up for those additional claims and premiums that you spent over time that you have not charged the funds for. And/or some fund is going to have to, or multiple funds will just have to transfer money over to make self-insurance hold. In the grand scheme of things, essentially, what you've done is you've put expenses over an Internal Service Fund. Those expenses really should have been charged to your operating funds as they occurred. They were not, so at this point in time, you're now going to have to pay the piper and figure out how to cover those. Ultimately, that is, those, those three funds with the deficits are the ones that we're most concerned with. Again, Rogers Tax, I think, was more of a fluke, with things just happened to be negative that year. Citywide Community Network, it's just been an issue as far as, it takes some money to operate. I know, I think you were potentially talking about outsourcing or doing some things, but just trying to generate enough money to cover those costs and the depreciation related to those costs is a challenge, especially with technology equipment, and technology equipment tends to not deteriorate quickly, but it does not have as long a useful life as a water or sewer line. And then self-insurance fund, again, we've known that one all the way through. You guys have been trying to make adjustments. But again, we knew the issue was there. You've had change in management. We then had to work with the new management team and say, okay, here's the issue. And then they have to work with addressing it. Like I said, I think that hole is still there. You're still going to be working on trying to get through that. It's just one of those things that I, it's going to take some time to unravel. Overall, you did have some budget violations. Based on the status of your books and records at that point in time, we're really not necessarily surprised that you had budget violations because you didn't necessarily have good records to be able to do budget actual comparisons throughout the year and say, hey, we need to adopt a supplemental budget here to make sure that we don't go over. So yes, they are there. That's something you always want to look at each year. But again, your records were not in a state that you could actually make good decisions as far as, hey, are we going to be over budget? We, again, with the embezzlement, there is definitely some loss there. But as far as audit adjustments and getting your books squared away, there were a lot more dollars being moved related to conversion issues than anything else that was going on. But again, we are at the point where you have this. It needs to be approved, obviously, to get sent in, which is why it's still in draft, just in case you guys see anything or anybody sees anything that needs to be adjusted. But essentially, hey, we're finally done with 2016. I didn't think we would ever get to say that. But it's been a long road to get here, but I think we're finally there.
Thank you, Tim.
Ben and Lorraine, I'll let you take it from there.
If you don't mind, before passing on to Lorraine, I'd just like to give council just a brief moment to catch your breath and prepare for any questions. And I think as Lorraine, I hand off to Lorraine here. If you have questions, please feel free to interject. So with that, Lorraine, I'll pass to you. You're on mute, Lorraine.
Thank you, Ben, and hello, Tim, hello, everyone. What I'm going to do is kind of walk you through some certain parts of the financial statement. I'm going to attempt to share my screen with you. If you can't see it on my screen, I know you also have a copy that Ben sent to you this evening. But I'm going to be approaching the review of the year and of the financial statement from the aspect, not of an auditor, but as trying to convey to you some items that you, as the fiduciaries of the city, may want to keep in mind. And as city council members, you do have a legal fiduciary responsibility to know where the finances is and what these reports mean. And as city council members, you do have a legal fiduciary responsibility to know where the finances is and, and what these reports mean and to look at them. So my goal is to walk through this enough with you in the next, you know, twenty minutes to help you feel like you may have satisfied the fiduciary responsibility and that you know enough to put the shelf, to put the report on your shelf and not worry about it or feel guilty that you haven't looked through it. Or conversely, to pique your interest in certain items of financial interest to some and to ask any questions as we go or to follow up later with Ben or me or, or Tim. So with that, I'm going to be sharing my screen for the financial statement. And see if you can see this. Does everyone have that now?
It looks like it's trying. Here we are.
Okay. So this is the first item that appears in the financial statement. After all the introductory information, the table of contents. And it comes right before the auditor's letter, which you will go through. And, but this is the management's discussion and analysis is required. And it tells you initially what some of the financial highlights of the year were. So even though you had some problems that year, you did have some highlights. Your, the city's total net position of fifty-five million eight at the end of the year. And that was an increase over the previous year by three hundred and ninety thousand. And your governmental funds, and there's a few different fund types, so I'm going to start explaining those in a second. There, but the governmental funds were ending fund balances of seven million, six hundred thousand dollars. And that was a slight increase over the previous year. Your enterprises, which are run like companies, increased two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And, but you did have those declines in your internal service funds that Tim was highlighting, especially due to the self-insurance, self-insured health fund. But also during two thousand sixteen, you completed capital projects and equipment acquisitions, something four point eight million, including the new city hall and some vehicles. And you got some grants that partially upset those. This management's discussion and analysis goes through some required information to person the information about city finances that are different from company finances. And because you are a taxing entity, you are required to use governmental accounting, you're a government entity, you're required to use governmental accounting, which is more complex than regular business accounting because you have these different fund types that have to be treated differently. And essentially, you, you have some several of the possible types of governmental funds that a city or town could have. Two, and there's certain funds that are accounting taxes and where you're ending up at the end of a year as far as did you levy enough property and sales taxes to finance your regular government operations? And there's other, and that's, they're looking at the, yeah, financial flow of things, whether you've got enough money coming in to, to take care of those needed services and, and wanted services of a governmental nature. And that's on this page M2, which shows governmental funds. And most of your basic services are of these types. You're not selling something to pay for the streets that you provide. You're not selling something to pay for your police services or for your general government. Instead, you levy taxes. You want to make sure there's the right amount of taxes come in to pay those services and not too many taxes so that you're just building reserves that you don't need, but not too few so that you don't have enough to still provide those required services if there's a economic problem. You also have proprietary funds. And these are run like a business. They kind of measure an operating net income, profit and loss. And you've got a few different types of these, but enterprise, enterprise funds is one type. And those are your companies that you run like a business that serve primarily outside customers. And those are like the airport, your rec center, water, hydroelectric, your community network and your solid collection and police dispatch, where you have other customers that are using those as opposed to the other type of proprietary funds that you have that are run like a business, but they're called internal service funds because the city itself is the prime customer. And that's your shop fund and your technology fund, your self-insurance fund. And then you have a third type of, of funds in governmental accounting that you have a couple of which are fiduciary funds. And that's where the city is, is in charge of taking care of some funds that really aren't, aren't the cities, but the city is the most logical place to take care of them. And typically those are like pension funds. Where the money put in will probably go to the benefit, the pensioners at some point in the future. They aren't funds any longer. Going on to page M3, this, this little table is like a condensed version of, of what's in the whole audit. And it shows two different types of activities, those governmental activities that you're levering, primarily levying taxes to support and the business type activities that you're primarily selling something or charging a service to support. The governmental activities had twenty million dollars in, in assets. The business type activities had thirty-seven million. If you look down to the bottom right-hand number on this table, you see that's for two thousand fifteen. Just to the left of that is two thousand sixteen's amount, which is fifty-five million, eight hundred and thirty-one million dollars in net position at year end. Most of that is this net investment in capital assets. We see that figure, which is near the right, net investment in capital assets under column two thousand sixteen shows that the city has forty-two million dollars worth of capital assets, whether it's infrastructure or buildings or water and sewer systems or plants or transmission lines, airport, et cetera. That's a big investment in capital assets. That's the biggest part, like most, about three quarters of your total net position. But it's not spendable. So you can't really spend those unless you decide to go out of business or sell some of the buildings or assets. These spendable portions are generally the next two numbers, the million two that's restricted cash or assets and the one eleven point nine that's available for meeting most of the operational needs of, of the city. When you go to the next page, we look at your changes in net position and the way these the total net position changes is whether you have more money coming in than, than going out at any given year. So whereas the first page showed what you accrued, I mean, those assets and the liabilities for debts that you still owe. This page shows what happened in one year that changed that net position. So governmental activities, when you look down to the bottom, near the bottom, the third line from the bottom says increase in net position. So for two thousand sixteen, the governmental activities went up by two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, which you can instantly tell was quite a bit better than the prior year, which had a, a loss. Moving to the business activities, you see the net position increased by six hundred and thirty-five thousand, which was more or less similar to the year before, which was a little better at seven hundred and four thousand. So both types of activities looked better in two thousand sixteen as a whole than they did in two thousand fifteen. Then moving to the bottom of that page, there's a little bit more information about what caused that and some rough descriptions of how that occurred. But the charts might be interesting for you or for any of your ones who might ask you, you know, why are we charging so much? Why are we paying much? This shows you for the governmental activities, and again, those are the ones that are both financed by taxes. You've got the expenses showing in blue, which almost always exceed the revenues that you get from running the program. So public safety for since has those four million dollars in expenses and about five hundred thousand in fees that they might charge for reports or whatever. Fines, things of that nature, perhaps, maybe the books, my, I slipped over to public works. The public safety, I should say, has about two hundred and fifty thousand in, in program revenues. And all the other services are therefore financed through taxation. Or grants or some other method other than charging fees for those services. So you see the general government, the general services, public safety, public works, parks and internal charges all have more expenses than, than revenues. Your capital projects got revenues through transfers in from, from your other funds and from grants. So looking at their revenues by sourcing the governmental activities, this circle pie chart shows you this big purple area, sixty-four percent is what comes in through property and sales taxes. The green amount of twelve is capital grants and contributions. And usually those come from the state. This twelve point six percent operating grants and contributions, those are shared monies generally that come from the state. Shared lottery funds or shared gas tax funds, that nature. And there's only a few little categories up here where you're charging parks and rec fees or things of that nature that bring in some revenues for what you do. That's why the focus on these governmental activities is so important to see how, to help determine whether you're charging the right rates, especially in your, in taxes and, and what's going to happen if some of those main sources of sales tax or whatever are impaired. Looking at the business type activities, it's generally the other way around, where you want to charge enough in program revenues to finance the operation. Because these are being on licenses. So your airport does have fees for landings or tie downs or various types of, of airport services. The rec center does have fees, the water and waste and solid waste operations do have user fees and utility bills. Police dispatch does collect fees from its other entities that use the disservices. So these business type activities are operated as though they weren't to make money. Sometimes you don't really want to make money at the rec center, but you want to run it like a business to show how much your sensitivity is that you've chosen to give it. So these proprietary funds are just measured differently. And here in the, in the pie chart, you see that charges for services are eighty percent of these revenues as opposed to some other types of general revenues that would come in. The rest of this this letter talks about the other major, the major funds that the city has. And the general fund is the one that runs most of your operations that you typically would identify as municipal services that any city or town generally has to provide. And they're listed in this pie chart on the bottom. General government, that's your city council expenses, administration, HR, cost, that type of thing. In the general government and general services divided up finance department, et cetera. Then there's public safety, public works, parks and rec and internal charges for services. And so you, this is pretty well balanced with public safety being the biggest, more than a third of what your general fund runs. You have some other major funds that are, that are listed here. You have the capital improvement fund that Tim talked about, that where any excess revenues from your Tabor revenues are put into this fund and to be used for capital acquisition. And that's the only way that you're, you're allowed to keep those based on the election that you had had several years ago. You have a street improvement fund that has a special dedicated sales tax to it. So those taxes and the expenses are tracked separately. You've got the equipment fund. Then you have your enterprise funds, airport, recreation, water, hydro, city community network and solid waste. And as Tim mentioned, some of those were in good position at year end and some of those had losses. So the airport had a resulting loss of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The rec center had a, had operating, had an operating loss of seven hundred and five thousand. And the water fund had operating income of eight hundred thousand. So you can just go through these at a glance if you don't want to look at, you know, number reports and you kind of read the paragraphs to see, okay, which fund ended up at year end and why did that happen? There's information in this report about your capital assets and debt administration, and I'll show you some pages on that in a little bit. And so we didn't put a lot in here about economic factors and next, since this report was already outdated when we finally got it done. So that's it, management's discussion and analysis, which may be useful to you or to your constituents or to some student during a report that contacts you and wants information that can kind of summarize what happened in the city during that year in a way that most people can appreciate. Speaking of appreciation, I really appreciate, I, I hope you do too, that you do have this great auditor's opinion, which is exactly what you want when it comes to this bottom section. It says, in our opinion, based on our, and the result of other auditors, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activity, business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information for the city as of the end of two thousand sixteen. That's what you want from, that's your clean opinion letter. And your auditor put in lots of work along with Ben and your staff to get to that point of having a clean opinion instead of something that would be much more detrimental to the city. These opinion letters really matter if you need to issue bonds or borrow money or submit reports to anyone who has loaned you money in the past, you want to have a clean opinion and then have them have the confidence in you so that you can borrow money or get a good rate if you go out to, for bonds on something based on having appropriate, well-audited and accurate financial statements. Moving forward, there's some, obviously lots of number tables that follow. And these first two are the ones that I summarized in the tables in the management's So if you look at the bottom line on this one, you see that same fifty-five million, eight thirty-one for total net position at year end with more detail. And the next page is what was summarized in the second table. It showed how you got there. And it's actually a two-page chart. So it's hard to view in this format, but when you open your book, it'll be displayed easily so that you can easily read it. Again, it ends with the same number, fifty-five, eight thirty-one. And you see what went up or down during the year on these lower lines to show how you, how you got to those amounts. The next part of the audit shows you more information fund by fund. We've been, been talking about the two types of funds all rolled together. And you'll see that there's various pages starting, I can't see the page number yet. On page six, with the balance sheet for each fund. In the governmental funds first, it shows all these governmental funds and what their revenues, what their assets and liabilities were during the, the year. And it totals them up and it also shows the non-major funds, which are detailed in the back of the book. And it compares them to the prior year. So you've got a lot of good information there how you improved from one year to the other and which line items were, were more or less. And then you have a reconciliation here that shows how your fund accounting, which is just looking at that flow of funds I mentioned, and whether you're seeing and charging enough fees to support these operations, how that relates to what it would be if you were running the city like a business and had to include all of your capital assets as well. Those were included in those first two statements. Let me look at this next schedule, which is your revenues and expenditures for the year, fund by fund. So here you can look at individual groupings of fines and forfeits. How much is that out of our twelve millionaire revenues? Not very much. Same with your groupings of expenditures in those same categories we saw on the pie chart for each fund, for the fund and for these other special revenue and capital improvement funds. Scanning along the bottom, these all had, had good ending fund balances for the year on this page. And on the next page. And there's a section that's similar for the other types of funds. I told you there's the governmental that are measuring the flow of financial resources. These proprietary funds are the ones run like a business and they're measuring the flow of economic resources. So they're they're showing their capital assets and depreciation right on their on their financial statements. Whereas the governmental funds or fund statements are just looking at money and money out and not saying, oh, we could sell that road for this or use that because it's really not feasible to run a city that way. So here's the listing at a glance of all your those proprietary funds. And they're listed across the top. And you can see at the bottom their net position. And there's just one that community, city community network that has a negative net position. It's not enormous, but it is something that you want to pay attention to when you look at your budgets. And you say, okay, we know we ended with a twenty sixteen with a negative net position in that fund. What are we doing when we set our rates and decide what we're going to spend in that fund to take care of that? Same with the other fund balances. You want to see not just that they're positive, but that they're sufficient to be able to do what you need to in future years. So this first one, which was for the airport, did have a positive net ending position. But most of it was in capital assets and there wasn't so much there for operations. So that's the kind of thing in your budgets that you can relate these financial statements to is where you want your cash to be as opposed to where you want your net position to be. Other governmental funds, I mean, sorry, other proprietary funds are shown in the back. As are, there's a column here, internal service funds. And they're each identified in the back of the book too, and they total this. And those are three funds we talked about before, including the self-insurance fund that had a negative. It makes most of this negative net net position show up at year end in twenty sixteen. Next, we show the same type of operating information for these funds. Those were the balance sheets that show the assets and liabilities at year end. These operating statements show what made things change during the one year of this of this statement. And all going along near the bottom, you see net income or loss before transfers. And you see that several of these had net operating losses. The airport and the hydro plant and the community network. So again, that's something to keep in mind when you do your budget. Some of them had transfers in or out that added or subtracted to that. And so then you get to your net change in these balances at year end. Minus fifty-nine for the airport, minus eighteen thousand, and minus one forty-nine for the community network. When you look at your budget, you're going to want to eventually get those into the black as you move forward each year. And that's what Tim was saying, looking at either transfers in from some other fund to buoy them up or to change the rate charges that you says to the user funds or other customers. Get the cash flow statement, but that is useful if you're interested about what contributed to the cash going up or down, whether it was capital or investing or operations. And we just saw a fair amount was usually from operations. Then we have fiduciary funds, which I mentioned, where you had a court bond agency fund. After that, you get to the notes to the financial statements. And I won't, of course, read through these, but I just want to tell you what's in here because very often when when a council member has a question or some member of the public does, there's information in the audit that answers it. So one of the questions you might be asked is, what is part of the city? And when it comes to our finances, is, you know, the such and such housing authority part of it? Is the municipality visitor center part of it? And this reporting entity tells you what component entities are, what other entities are part of your your reporting entity. They're called component units when they're not directly the city, but they're either controlled or supported enough by the city that they would fall under your assets for financial reporting. And in this report, the municipality country visitor center was the only component unit. Then the statements tell how you go about things. And again, describes those types of funds that I mentioned earlier about the general fund and the governmental funds. Governmental funds not only have a general fund, but they've got special revenue funds where you have to keep track of revenues separately from the general fund or any other fund because they're restricted in their use. So you've got this street improvement sales tax. And people might ask you, how much of it goes to the street improvement fund? Here's the answer, twelve point three six percent goes to the city's street improvement fund, and it could only be used for that. Lodger's tax, what's the lodger's tax? How much is used for this or that? What about the equipment fund? Where's how much sales tax goes to that? And these these types of questions are answered here. You might you might be asked about what businesses the the city is running. And these proprietary funds are listed here and what they do. Same with those internal service funds. And what those fiduciary funds are. At this point, you're just reporting the court bond agency fund. There's a part here that talks about that basis of accounting, whether you're measuring the flow of financial resources or economic resources, how your budget process work according to your requirements and what has to happen by when, how you levy your your taxes, how you treat your cash and investments, value your inventories. How much, what do you call a capital asset? Well, it's something that has to have a useful life of more than five years and costs more than five thousand dollars. So there's information here about every accounting policy that you have. And these have to be followed, of course. It shows various other items and how they're treated. And it talks about the position and the fund balances and what what those mean. Note two gives information about your deposits and investments. And it tells what you can invest in if that question ever comes up, where you're invested, where what your credit risk is and how what types of investments you have by US instrumentalities or mutual funds or that type of thing. Whether you're in investment pools from the state government that are, you know, sanctioned under the state government. So there's a lot of information about that type of 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 policy. Then there's lists of your capital assets. So when you see capital assets listed on those balance sheets, like we mentioned, I think it was like twenty million in the governmental activities. But you can see how much of these were buildings and machinery, how much has already been depreciated and what the net value is. And which departments would have incurred the depreciation of those assets. Same thing for the business activities. Everything's divided into those two groups. And the business type activities have their own capital assets, land, water rights, machinery, equipment, infrastructure. There's also listings of your long-term debt here. And it's good to be acquainted with this. And it's listed in a real concise way. So for your governmental activities, you really don't have any other than what's called compensated absences, which is if everyone were to leave on the same day, what would you owe in unspent vacation and sick leave, et cetera, that the people would be paid out? That's half a million, so that's a pretty good balance there. But that's very unlikely that would that would happen. Business type activities, especially with the longevity of your employees. You had a number of employees of fifteen years or more, which is wonderful. But here in your business type activities, it lists out all of these loans and and bonds that you've issued. And it shows what you paid down every year and what the balance is. So you're still owing eight and a half million dollars. Each one of those loans is listed here. And you'll see how long the payout period is, what the interest rate was, why you incurred that debt. And it is the debt service to maturity. So there's quite a lot of good information there. Note five is internal balances, which fund owes, which other fund, what money or which fund transferred money to which other fund during the year. And you do have a fair amount of that activity. And you you own money to other funds to help them from other from one to the other. And to touch on that too, especially with, I believe it was the self-insurance fund also. Oh, no, it was the community network fund. So if you ever wanted to delve into that, you've got the information to do it. There's also information about every retirement plan that you have that you participate in and what the rates of contributions are and any liability that you have incurred by being part of it. Police and well, police pension plan is usually the majority of that note. Then there's more accounting information about gap versus non-gap revenues. But you see here that you've got risks, commitments, and contingencies, and some information about the self-insurance. There is a note on the fraud disclosure required. And it ends with the twenty-sixteen accounting software upgrade along with internal controls are expected to prevent a recurrence of such fraud. And it was partially that conversion to new and better accounting software that ultimately exposed that fraud. So that was a good move despite the fact that the conversion did not go well. Just flip through the rest of the book. That was the main part of what's in here. But there's more detailed information about the pension plans if you're interested in that. There's more detailed information about the budgets for each year, what the budget was and whether you changed it, what the actual was and how you ended up. And it gives more line or group information on each part of the budget for the general fund and the major special revenue funds. And then in the back are some grouping or combining statements that show for those non-major funds, how they total into the one column up in the front of the book that said non-major funds. So here's for those non-major funds, like the lodger's fund, which did have a negative fund balance are listed. And again, that's small. These fun, these figures carry forward into your budgets. So these are actual figures. And for this in the twenty sixteen forward, all of your budgetary figures have are essentially cast each year. And you've obviously forecast through twenty twenty-one. But this has given finally a good start to twenty sixteen. And as you finish the financial audits for twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and then soon twenty, you'll be on track to have very good actual information from which you to which you can use as a starting point on your budgets. More in budgetary information follows. And then at the very end of the book is a report for the state government. You do have some information back, you have several tables back here that are building toward ten years of history on the tax revenue and other statistical information that's required for some of your bond issues to be reported each year. And a glance through those, but it gives a lot more detail and a lot longer trend line as to how charges for services and net income and operating income are progressing from year to year. So that's my fly through the budget, I mean, through the financial statement for you. I hope it's useful in in your budgeting and in going forward and looking at where you want to focus your fiduciary sites as you fulfill that duty. I'd be happy in answering the information now or later.
And Marion, if you don't mind, I just wanted to to provide some historical perspective just for for council's knowledge. And this is part of the reason I didn't necessarily highlight, and I probably should have explained why I wasn't highlighting. Marion had pointed out that you had some losses in your proprietary funds. And that has has typically been fairly consistent with what you've done in the past. There's there's two ways of approaching your your proprietary funds. One of them is that you set your user fees and charges to the point that you're building that fund balance or net position to replace the underlying capital assets that are being used. And then some other entities actually go with, we're not going to set the user charges any higher than we have to. So over time, we are going to use up our capital assets. And then when those capital assets are used up, we're going to have to take out new debt at that point in time or we're going to have to go get grants or something like that. In the city's case, like for instance, in the airport fund, you do have a loss in the airport fund, but you don't necessarily have a cash loss. What you're doing is you're just not covering any depreciation. So that loss that's sitting there just just means that you you're not setting aside any money to replace airport capital assets. And Russ is probably just leaving those so that somebody else has to do that once he says after sixty years or so he'll be done. But but ultimately, like like the with the airport, oftentimes those capital assets are replaced through federal aviation grants. So you don't necessarily have to set aside a lot of money for those replacements. Your cost is typically like five percent. The state kicks in five percent and the FAA kicks in or whichever federal department, I think it's FAA, kicks in ninety percent of the cost. So in in some of those cases, like in in airport and hydro, what you're doing is you're using up the assets, you're just not setting aside money for future replacement. In other cases, like we said, for city community network, you're just plain losing money. So don't don't completely panic when you're lose, when your financial show that you're losing money. Just know that that why that's happening is because you're not setting aside money for future replacement.
Thank you, Tim. When you see that depreciation is more than the loss, then that's definitely the conclusion you can draw.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine and Tim, appreciate it. Council members, I know that was a fire hydrant hose pointing right right at you. So appreciate your your patience through that and listening. Are there any immediate questions that any any one of you have that you'd like to pose at this time? Otherwise, I'm happy to move the agenda on back to the mayor.
I've just had a quick question about the the issues that Tim brought up, the the four hundred and ten thousand dollar write-down and then all in the CCN fund for twenty sixteen and then also the the self-insurance. Can you just touch on those real quick, Ben?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, let me give this little preface. City manager myself walked into this, right? So we just find out as we come and we try to make use of what we can. What, as Tim, I think kindly said, he brought it to my attention because that early on, and and we're starting the audit about a year and a half ago for sixteen or trying to get it finished, said, hey, look, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but there's this four hundred and ten K that's sitting out there as a receivable on your books that's relating to this amount that you're you're asking for reimbursement for. Okay. And oh, what is this? Okay, come to find out, it's basically, the city dropped the ball in not filing the reimbursement is what I gathered timely. And we've got a contractor, at some point, a contractor was hired then to help ensure that we're filing time. Okay. Well, in the meantime, this four hundred and ten is just sitting on our books as receivable. And I'm looking at Tim, I'm going, well, Tim, as far as I know, we haven't received this money in three years. And my past lot of experiences gone, no way that we're not getting that money. So we we need to do what's right, be transparent, we need to just write it off. And as Tim had mentioned, if we do get the money ever, it comes in as a, you know, a heyday, right? What my expectations are is we'll never get that money. Been in touch with the contractor and she says it's, we filed and submitted the paperwork necessary with the party. And submitted the paperwork necessary with the party that, that we, the governmental, federal government, the party that we have to work with. And at the end of the day, it's with the lawyers. It's been with the lawyers for a year, for two years. So it's in some file somewhere as far as I'm concerned. So I would not expect any of that coming through. There's still frankly, there's still some challenges today with that process. And, and the contractor that we're still working through and getting it done timely. It's a little more. Work on our part to ensure the contractors doing their job. Whereas before, we just dropped the ball together. Okay. So something. I would say please feel free to continue to ask in the future. Okay? The, so that's your question about the, the E rate in the, the 410?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Moving on, your second question was about the self insurance health fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The self insurance health fund, as Tim said, it's, it's just been. How I, I put it simply, right? I'm a simple guy. And the way I think about it is we were underfunding it. Okay? We needed to put in a thousand dollars, but we were only putting in 500. Okay, that's kind of how I look at it. In 2016 with the convert, after the conversion. We were fully funding them at that point is, is how I look at it. So when I look at 17, 18, 19. Basically what we do is the city charges internally per employee. $1,574 a month for health insurance. Okay? We're transferring that all over. Now that's, 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 so it's fully funding the, the, what we say it's costing us. Okay? Now the question is, did we get the calculation right on saying, do the, do we know what it's actually costing us? Are we charging ourselves sufficient amount of monies to cover the premiums and all the claims and expenses that come in against that fund? Okay, that's so, we want, we hope the answer is yes. What 17 is going to be a little convoluted yet still, I think, because of, we really need to see that financial audit where it stands. And the reason being is in about 16, was it 15, 16, 17, there were some changes. That the prior city manager and I believe the prior HR director had started around the self insurance health fund. Okay, to try and get it more manageable. Sort of some, there are some planned changes that they made to reduce. The city's. Obligations for the fund. Okay? And what you, what we started seeing is the claims against the fund are actually starting to reduce. In the following years, 17, 18, 19. Like I said, 17, what I'm finding is 16 through 17, it's not clear where it actually is falling out. But when I've looked back at 18 and 19, what I've started seeing is what appears to be a. If you want to call it a surplus, where the money coming in to cover those claims and expenses is more than sufficient. Right? For example, if we say we're bringing in $2.8 million for revenue, which is that internal charge we're doing for healthcare coverage. But we're only paying out $2.4 million, that's a $400,000 surplus. Okay? When I've looked at 19 and definitely this or 20 on the trajectory where we're going to end 20 and then how we plan for 21. I'm expecting to see a. An increasing surplus year over year because of those changes that were made to the plan back in 16, 17. So. That million dollar deficit, so to speak, that Tim has spoken about. It's going, what's going to happen is I believe it will start dropping year over year. Okay? It's going to take a little time to get there. The question is when? And. I have a feeling it's going to be, from what I can gather. You're probably, we're probably still about two years out from it to be eliminating that. Deficit is kind of where I'm gathering. But the thought is that is once that deficit is gone, then the recommendation is you build up. A reasonable balance or a fund in there to cover any expenses that may be. You know, to cover future expenses that you're on the layer of. Okay? When you get a comfortable balance, at that point, drop the rate, internal rate that you're charging. So right now, the rate we chart, like I said, is about 1575 per employee. Eventually that should come down, which then it reduces your overall employee, overall personnel costs for the city. But I think that's a few years off skill. See, as a million dollars deficit is, is not a small chunk of change.
So you, you answered my question. I was, I was mostly concerned about where, where the vector of that was going in 17 and 18. And the fact that you said that it's shrinking after 16 is, is good to hear.
Yeah, I apologize for that long-winded answer, but it's something that I've been very mindful with. I've been very specific on not making changes to our dollars. I didn't feel comfortable to increase the internal rate. But I also did not feel comfortable to reduce it. So we kept it steady just to make sure that we're at least adding to the bottom one. Thank you. You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Ben, just touching back on the CCN piece. So the ball was dropped on the fight, like the financial side, like the financial department side, or was it? The actual program?
I was not here. I have my beliefs and I'm going to, I'm, I'm sorry to take a political answer with you. Like, and that's partly because I was not here. It's hard for me to comment on it. I have an opinion, but that's what it is, is my opinion. I believe it would depend on who you would speak with. Some people would say it was the program's fault. Others, people would say it's the financial department's fault. Okay? My two cents goes, forget about whose fault it is. The responsibility in my mind lies with the business because you're relying, you're relying on the business to run that program as a business. Finance is the support of that business. So at the end of the day, the business is responsible. So that's where now we're kind of operating in that mentality. As I was frank before. There are still challenges with that process and it can be improved. And I don't have an answer at this point for that.
Right. But you did say that, that, that reimbursement process was improved after 2016? Or sorry, I don't know if I heard that correctly.
At, at some point, we hired a contractor and I believe that was after. After it was found that we were basically missing out on money. Okay? And I don't know when that actually came up and became aware. To the prior finance director and then the director of CCN at that point. I don't know when that happened or occurred. But at some point, we do have a contractor. I know we're struggling with that contractor today, who's trying to really give us the service we need. To file for that reimbursement process specifically for the library. I know Alicia's having a hard time with that individual. And that's where we are today, but we are continually monitoring and asking, where is it? Are we getting it? Did we get it? And so on.
Thank you.
Yes. Or how far back they can, they can pay. Like our scope of losing a year falls off as we've been to the. Is there, is there a set of like, does 2016, is that not reimbursable after say 21 or something like that?
Yeah, so let me add a, you, you cut in and out, so I hope I understood your question right. If I don't answer it, please pause me for a moment. Okay? To clarify, the 410,000 is multiple years. It's not a one single event for one single year. It was multiple years. So now, when we're talking about going forward, 17, 18, 19, 20 contractors involved. And we're reimbursing and getting that reimbursement. Now, I, I can specifically speak to 19 and 20, since I've been here. That we've had to really be program managing, so to speak. And making sure that's occurring. 18, 17, I don't have as much confidence just because I wasn't here. But what I understand is, yes, we were received, we had the contractor place that time. Thank you. You're welcome.
And, and just to, to reiterate what, what Ben is guessing as far as what happened prior to. Yes, there was a lot of finger pointing because, because that question would come up each year as far as what's the status of this. And what we were told prior to Ben was essentially what, what Ben is saying is. Even though at that point in time, we, we were told that you had a contractor that was supposedly doing it. But yes, it was essentially the department was saying finance dropped the ball, finance was saying the department dropped the ball. But that, yes, you did have a contractor that was filing those reports for you and it's like, hey, well, if you're hiring somebody to do it, why aren't you getting the money? And it just kept building and building. And that's why when, when Ben finally came in, it's, I was one of the first things like, Ben, we've got an issue here. It's, this is not, I, I'm not comfortable continuing to book a receivable when you're not seeing any money coming in. So yeah, e- essentially what, again, Ben, what you're, what you're guessing happened is, is what was happening is, is. Nobody was taking responsibility and ultimately the ball got dropped. And we kept looking for reimbursements and those reimbursements didn't come in.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, so any other questions? Otherwise, Mary, give the agenda back to you.
Thank you very much for all, all your information. It's a lot of information to digest and we appreciate all your efforts. Okay, the, there are no public hearings. No unfinished business. Under new businesses. Pay invoices through 2020, the director of finance, Ben Burkett.
Yes. So, so moving on now. And I believe Tim dropped off, Lorraine, feel free to drop off as well. And if you don't mind, give us our screen back. Thank you again, Marion.
You're welcome.
I think at the bottom, there's just a stop share or it's maybe a little floating button that's hiding somewhere on your screen.
Found it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, so now we're moving on to the approval to pay invoices through 2020. This is just part of the normal process year in, year out, where council does not meet the last, at the last council meeting at the end of the month of December. So all we're asking for is to have council approve. The expenditures and for the, the city to go ahead and make payment on our invoices that we receive from now through the end of the month. So that way. We don't have vendors or customers or people who are relying on payment for us that they get paid timing. If I remember correctly. The, the whole expenditure list comes back to you again in January, just as a way for you to review it, if you'd like.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, can, can we have a vote on this, please?
I make a motion authorizing payment for the city invoice through December 31st, 2020. With the list of expenditures be furnished to council the next first meeting in January 2021.
Second.
Adina.
Hi.
Yazi.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Aubrey.
Hi.
Duncan.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi. Thank you. Next item is resolution number 28, series 2020, human resources director, Matt Cashner. Red Matt.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about changing our employee handbook. All that Senate Bill 20 dash 205 requires employers or 16 or more employees to provide sick leave to part-time employees beginning. January 1st of 2021. The Senate bill requires that part-time employees receive one hour of sick time for every 30 hours that they work. And they can earn 48 hours per year. They can be used immediately, which is something that's different. I attached that in the, in the attachments for you to look at. And currently, a part-time employee would have to work 12 months. And then depending upon the hours that they worked during that 12 months is how much sick time they're granted for all. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question on that. Like you said, this policy, number 28. Is that including the vacation and everything too? Is that?
No, sir. This is strictly sick time hour.
Okay, so I, I was just wondering why they showed all the vacation taken and all that stuff. I was just wondering if it's the same policy. Number 28.
I'm not sure where you're, what you're looking at.
Is this page 20?
Page 20.
22, which starts, then you got page 23?
This, this is part of the personnel handbook, but. The only place that the changes are going to happen is in the sick time year.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I was just wondering, this is off the topic here. Maybe in the future, we ought to look, kind of look into that vacation for the other employees too. So that's just something for in the future. But I was looking at that, but I understand the policy is just for the sick leave.
Okay.
Any other question or comments from the council? Do you have a motion on this item, please?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 28, series 2020. Approving amendment to the employee handbook 2020.
Second. Yazi.
Hi.
Aubrey.
Hi.
Duncan.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Adina.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the 2021 joint chemical bid, general services director, Rick Smith.
Good evening, city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. This is annual bid that we do every year. I can't tell you how far back we've been doing this, but. For a number of years, we coordinate the chemicals used by the water and sewer plants in our area. The participants in this bid, of course, are the city of Cortez, town of Dolores, town of Manca's, Montezuma Water Company. And what we do, we combine the chemicals that are used at the various plants and come up with an annual usage. And bid those quantities out. And we realize by aggregating the quantities used, we, we realize a cost saving to all the people. This year, the bid opening was held on November 24th. And we received 13 responses to our proposal. This is a little bit different in the fact that we award this bid based on the individual. Item basis instead of the lump sum. That way we're able to take care of, take advantage of the cost savings on a per item basis. And the chemicals for the water plant in the case city of Cortez is the regular budgeted item. The total for the city of Cortez this year would be $192,512.51. And you can see the value of the whole bid was $302,555.40.
Any questions or comments?
I think that's been going on for several years, like you mentioned, Rick, and it's been paying off, hasn't it, correct?
Yes.
What, what was the rate for last year? For the previous year?
Did you say the rate?
Yeah, what was what was the what was the cost for the previous year that you guys decided on?
I don't think I have that enough information available. It was about the same amount.
So I know fluorine, adding fluorine to the water or fluoride to the waters probably come up several times. If that was something that all the water providers ended up adding, what's the cost like for that?
If you look at the attachments, the items that are in the bid, I don't see fluoride on there. And I do not believe the City of Cortez Water Plant uses fluoride. That's a Phil Johnson question, but the list of the chemicals are on the left side of the bid tabulation, chlorine, sulfur, excuse me, sulfur dioxide, liquid alum, sodium hydrochloride, and some coagulant stuff. But I don't believe fluoride fluoride's in the bid process. Did I answer your question, Rachel?
Not really, but that's okay. I guess I was just curious. I know we don't add fluoride right now, but I know that, you know, some communities do, and I'm just wondering what the cost of that is if enough, if we decided to start adding that to our water, or if someone wanted us to, like the dentists.
Rich Landreth, I would would believe be the one to contact on that, so because I'm sure there's a process of injecting that. So I don't know if we would have to add the equipment at the plant in order to do that, plus the chemicals. That's a whole study would probably need to be done for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a movement. We consider approving the 2021 Joint Chemical Bid to the individuality highlighted vendors. Our city, Cortez, total award of $192,512.51.
Second.
Second. Lucero.
Hi.
Huckins.
Hi.
Medina.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Yasi.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance number 1282, series 2020, Director Finance Ben Burkett again.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. What we have before us is relates to the sales and use tax system and the agreement that the City of Colorado, the City of Cortez signed with the state of Colorado, was that about two months ago? If you remembered, contextually, what it was is the city signed an agreement with the state to utilize the state as a central processor and means by which out-of-state retailers can file their sales and use tax and potentially eventually lodgers tax collections through the SUTS system. And as part of that effort, the CML and the state of Colorado recommended that all of the local jurisdictions review their sales tax ordinances and provided recommended changes to the sales tax ordinances. And that's what we have here before us. And that's what really this first page is outlining, the whereas, the hereas, it's giving you that little more background to why we're doing it, right? And this begin is to align with state recommendations to further support the teeth that the city has in collecting sales tax by retailers who are outside of the city limits. Okay? And a couple of real simple examples as we talk through here is the, a lot of the ordinances prior really stated like within city limits. But as we know, the commerce now is global and it's we're not limited physically within the city limits. So what it's really doing is removing a lot of those limitations. And it's also saying, hey, you're not physically located. You can be anywhere in the world. If you make a sale within within the city limits, then you need to remit sales tax. There's also this other item here, which is called Economic Nexus, which you'll see here on page 41. That's that is new to us. It's something that is recommended in a for to for the support the sales tax collections. And what that's really saying is even if there is a retailer who is not at the end of the day registered or nor remitting sales taxes, but they have sales occurring here in the city, we have the right to go after them. So really, that's all it is. It's bringing this in line with the with the SUTS system and to give the city the teeth that we need to really ensure that we collect the sales taxes for non-local sales.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any more questions from the council? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve on first reading ordinance number 1282, series 2020, approving the city to enter into an agreement with the Colorado Department of Revenue for the sales and use tax system. SUTS to collect, centralize, and simplify the collection of taxes for online sales and set for public hearing on January 12, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Rainey.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Medina.
Hi.
Huckins.
Hi.
Yasi.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is resolution number 29, series 2020, City Manager John Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a renewal for participation in the Rural Jump Start Program. This is a program that was instituted by the state to try and drive a little economic development in the rural areas. And what it is is businesses who want to come to one of the jump start areas, they apply to the state and the state either approves or doesn't approve. And each municipality who participates agrees to give 100% rebate of property taxes. And under normal circumstances, I'd be a little leery of a program like this. But for Cortez, we get so little for property taxes. I don't imagine we're going to get some big mega factory that's going to, you know, be giving back a couple hundred thousand dollars in property taxes. But we only get a little over $100,000 a year in property taxes. So no matter what we would get, it's really going to be a drop in the bucket and not have any significant impact on the city. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and authorize participated participation in this Rural Jump Start Program.
I don't, I don't remember if it was asked last time, but do we have we had anybody actually use this program before in the city?
No, I believe the closest one to us, I believe, was over in Platte County.
Is there a way we can promote it more than to know that, you know, to let people know that's available?
Well, I do believe the state is promoting it and Region 9 will promote it as soon as we sign up on this. I know that, or I believe that Mankas and Dolores are already participants. And I was, Laura said, you know, it's kind of odd not seeing Cortez in that. And I thought it was odd too. So I said, well, we'll get it on there before the end of the year then.
Okay, is it something that you could put on the website too that like just lives there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 29, series 2020, authorizing continuing participation in the Rural Jump Start Zone Program.
Second. Huckins.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Yasi.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Medina.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the addendum number two to the city manager contract. Okay. We have the contract for the city manager. Addendum number two. See, the city council met in their executive session. And we decided to instead of contract requesting the city manager voluntary resigns his position, we're going to change it from six weeks back to two months, which is four weeks, for written notice. And we also decided to award the city manager a 3% raise in his income.
Mr. Mayor, it's eight weeks, not four weeks.
Say again?
It would be eight weeks, not four weeks.
Eight weeks, that's what I meant. Yes, thank you. Okay, are there any questions on that? Comments? Okay. Do we have a motion on that?
Hey, you guys are going to prepare a written addendum to this?
We are.
Okay, that's just, so we'd authorize the mayor then to sign the addendum to the contract as well?
Okay, do I have a motion on this item?
Moving along.
Mr. Mayor, I I move that we approve the addendum two to the city manager John Doherty's contract.
And authorize the mayor to sign it?
David, would you add and authorize the mayor to sign the contract?
Allow us the mayor to sign it. I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Huckins.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Lucero. Rainey.
Hi.
Medina.
Hi.
Yasi.
Hi.
Lady.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a transfer of airport land lease due to hangar sale. Russ Machen, Airport Manager.
I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay. We went through this a couple of months ago in October with a different hangar sale and land lease. Basically, Marty Ruggles, Stanley Ruggles in the in the memo here. He sold his hangar to a gentleman named Carl Spielman. And they've already consummated the sale of the hangar, so we now need to transfer the lease, the land lease to Mr. Spielman. So there's no fiscal impacts to the airport. It's just for hangar, personal aircraft hangaring. There's no business being run in there. So everything is basically transparent to us and the budget. It's just a different occupant on that hangar. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this item, please?
I make a motion approving them. Approving the airport land lease for airport hangar for Carl Spielman.
Second.
Medina. Medina.
Hi.
Yasi.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Huckins.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, other items of business. It's approval of memorandum of understanding between the Cortez Community Network Enterprise and Montezuma County Council. John Doherty?
Actually, I think Rick Smith and Rachel Medina are the ones that attended this meeting, so I prefer that Rick handle this.
Hey, Rick?
Council and honorable mayor and city council, it's an exciting project to participate in. The city was approached by the county to partner with them in getting broadband down to County Road G in the intersection of Highway 491. The county has provided funding out of their budget to bring that broadband down there. And by partnering with the county, the city gets to bring also broadband down towards to the city limits down to Southwest and leverage some more infrastructure along the network there. We hope that this partnership grows as far as a coalition of phase one, this being a part of a larger regional effort to get Toyac connected to Cortez. And it also works with Southwest Colorado Council Governments Project to get connectivity to Cortez and down to Toyac and ultimately around Mesa Verde. So it's an exciting first step. And the MOU basically memorializes that the City of Cortez and Montezuma County will work together to make this happen. I know the county would like to get that connectivity down to Road G and 491 sometime around July at the latest, so that that's why it's kind of moving fairly fast. But we're all pretty excited about it. It does open up some opportunities to get some grant funding. The city commits to provide the services of our grant writer to the project. And we also are going to be leveraging some of our existing infrastructure to make that happen. So pretty excited. It's a it's a big step forward for both the county and the city, and it's a good project for us to partner on.
Thank you, Rick. Rick, that McElmo Canyon Road, is that right? Road G?
Yes, sir. Ultimately, the city would like to get connectivity through our airport. So this this gets us further down the road, literally, so. And I'd like to take a minute and say thanks to Jim McClain. He's kind of led the effort for the county. And Commissioner Candleary, I'd like to thank them for their efforts as well. So looking forward to the partnership.
Thank you. Any more questions, council?
How much money are city going to be involved with? Just a grant writer? What did you say, Rick?
We're going to mostly be leveraging our existing infrastructure. The city will probably need to put in some funding for cable that we're going to put in the empty conduit. And we're going to partner with pole attachment agreement with Empire if 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 the route proves out aerial is a better way versus underground. So the county is committed to do some of that engineering so that we can find out those costs. So the county is committed to do some of that engineering so that we can find out those costs. Directly, the city and county are going to develop a project budget and start working towards getting that project done. So I'll be able to answer more specifically once we get that project budget developed.
Thank you, Rick. Any more questions from, comments from the council?
I just want to make a comment. I think, one, it's, it's a good way to work with the county and get a project done. Two, I think we've had a fiber infrastructure or broadband infrastructure for a long time. And I feel like we need, we need to either like commit and keep going or scrap it. And, you know, because like the auditor said, we're losing money in, in that fund. So if we can get the county on board and, and get distribution to, down to Road G where, you know, Love's is going in and hopefully other businesses will go in down in that kind of industrial area and maybe clean that up. And then get to our airport and then eventually connect with Toyac. I think the, you know, the pandemic and having everything go virtually really highlighted how important internet is to, you know, everybody in our society these days. So I just think this is a good opportunity to kind of move forward.
Thank you, Rachel. Mayor, if I may. Ditto what the vice mayor said, or mayor pro tem said. I agree with everything she said. I also, because it was brought up here while you guys were talking, just a reminder that the auditor and Lorraine went through 2016. Those numbers have changed in the last four years. There probably still is a deficit in the fiber fund. However, if council wants to do this, we can find the money. And I think it's extremely important to keep this, the system running and to expand the broadband as far as we possibly can. And I truly believe this is a win-win for everybody involved.
Any more questions or comments from the council?
I just have one more. The, what's the community, Cortez Community Network Enterprise? Who's that? Is that a combination of the county and the city, or what is that?
That's the enterprise that the city owns that runs the fiber, what we call the fiber broadband network throughout the city. It's the organization formed by city council in the years past to run the fiber broadband system.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was a combination of both?
No, no, it actually goes back several years when we did an ordinance to create the enterprise. And I forget when, but it was created much like the hydro plant and/or the waterfront. It was an ordinance following those general rules of instruction, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments, council? Could I have a motion on this item? Mr. Mayor, I move to, for the approval of MOU between Cortez Community Network Enterprise and MOCO to work together to bring broadband and fiber down 491 to Road G.
Second. Yossi?
Hi.
Dobree?
Hi.
Huckins?
Hi.
Medina?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Lucero?
Hi.
Lady?
Hi. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen participation. Comments may be limited to four minutes per person. Please comment on items not listed as public hearing. Council may or may not respond to comments. Are there any citizen participants, Bill?
There's one, but her hand, her hand isn't raised.
Okay. Are there any comments from the Zoom people? Okay. There are no city attorneys reports, city manager reports?
I apologize for this. It came up late this afternoon in a discussion I was having with Tim Mayberry, the auditor. Oh, boy. He's resigning. Just put it blank. He's resigning. His comment was that he has had a conversation with his staff. And by the way, he is down auditor two. But he had a conversation with his staff. He does not feel that he can deliver as timely as these audits should start coming through now. And he felt that it was going to be in the best interest of the city to go ahead and find a new auditor. So my question for the council is, obviously, I'm currently in the process of hiring to replace Ben at the end of this month. Will not be hired by the end of this month. At this point, I think the earliest we would have somebody in the finance department is probably, realistically, at least mid-February. So my question is, am I holding off to hire the auditor until the finance director is hired? Or do I just press forward on both of these simultaneously and continue this process on? It was brought up to me that the new finance director would probably like to hire the person they're going to be working with. However, that may delay things, you know, three or four months beyond this point. And I really don't want to delay anything. I think that, you know, Ben came in and he didn't get to hire Tim Mayberry as the auditor. They were already here. Most places we go, we don't hire the staff we have to work with or the contractors. It's just there. And my recommendation is to give me the authority to go ahead and press forward and put the RFP out there and press this forward as quickly as we can, as my recommendation. I'd like input from council.
I feel like time is of the essence and we really need to get this stuff done as soon as possible. I would rather both, just both be put out.
I agree. I think, I think it's essential that we get, get both applications out, get the word out and cross our fingers.
I mean, I made agreement with that also.
Like I said, a comment, it seems like we have always had trouble with auditors. Something, something we need to change or something?
I don't know that we need to change anything, but I'm going to guess that the next one is going to be considerably more expensive than this past one.
Are we going to be able to get the rest of the audits done this year?
Not by Tim Mayberry, but I suppose it depends on how long it takes us to get the auditor in place. As you heard, 2017 is not, is doing fairly well, heck a lot better than 2016. But there were still a few accounting errors that she was finding and things. But really, it took, what, two years to get 2016 done? I would imagine, because she's already been working on 17, 18 and 19 were cleaned up by our own staff, so that should go really quickly. So, but, you know, I'm still really anticipating that the audits can still be caught up by the end of this year, but not if we delay it three or four months.
I guess, kind of on a similar note, like Lorraine will be still with us then, right?
Yes.
Okay. And she's not being split elsewhere, she's just focusing on, on our audits?
She knows what she has in the hopper for us, yes. So she is scheduling around our audits.
Okay.
So John, just, I got a little confused. There's no way we're going to have completed audits for 17, 18, and 19 by December 31st of 2020?
No way.
Okay, so we would be looking at, if I'm following this, we put out a request for proposals. We're out 30 days before we get responses. We're out however long it takes us to pick somebody. So you folks are looking at them starting on the war sometime in February. So we would have audits hopefully before the summer, but I don't know how far ahead of the summer.
Will, so we're still bound by getting all of these audits in before we can apply for grants, correct?
Correct. And I talked with Patrick Adola yesterday and told him that I anticipate that this 16 would be approved tonight or at least by January, council will approve it. So 16 is out of the way and he was thrilled that we're finally making progress.
Okay, yeah, I'd agree with putting the RFP out as soon as possible and just trying to move forward. I also have a question then on how you're going to hire the next finance director. Are you doing interviews by yourself and selecting? Or are you going to have people with financial background help you pick the next one? Because we're going to need someone who's ready to step up the plate, up to the plate like Ben was.
Um, I haven't given it much thought, other than I will have some finance person on the interview panel that is also of high background. So any interviews I do, this is always the most comfortable one. Because I do understand their background and what they need to do. Just for clarification for the new council members, because you weren't on here, Ben may appear to have hit the ground running, but that's not the case. He came from the private sector and had a lot of learning to do in governmental accounting. And that's, as Tim said in his correspondence to me, that is always the problem, that accounts think they can come in and do governmental accounting and they find out it's totally different. And ideally, I'd like to find somebody with a background in governmental accounting. But I did not find that with them. And I will hire the best person I possibly can. And thank goodness, Lorraine will be here to steer them, at least for a little while.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
John, I got one more question. Do we need to, council needs to know that we're probably going to, it's going, and maybe you said this, and I apologize, because we're probably going to be putting in the RFP that we're looking for an expedited process on these audits through 2019, I believe we'd be putting out to bid, and/or 2020?
2020 now, it's going to be over by then.
Yeah, and so this could be a very expensive request for proposal, just so everybody understands, to get the attention we think we need. And it could limit the number of people who actually are willing to even bid on the process.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council? Okay. Thank you, John, and thank you, Mike. The city council committee reports. Anyone have a committee they've gone to? Things are pretty quiet. I'll give the report on the workshop. We completed our contribution to community nonprofit grant requests. We had an update on the care responding to local businesses. And we discussed planning a council retreat. The council went into executive session to discuss the city manager's evaluation. We had an item agenda added to the agenda. We had general council discussion. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. I'd like to add, this is our last council meeting of the year. Wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe, be kind to each other, wear masks when appropriate, keep your social distances, don't forget to wash your hands. And thank you all, appreciate all your work you've done. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.